Okay, Sue, go ahead.
All good?
Yep.
All right, thanks for your patience. Welcome to the town of Pompey Planning Board Meeting today, September 20th, 2021. What a beautiful day it was outside. Enjoy it while it's here. First and foremost, like to start with Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America.
To the Republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Here are meeting minutes from August 16th. Had a couple revisions I know that were revised today. There were board members have any other revisions? If not, make a motion to accept as revised.
Second to motion.
Seven seconds. Any discussion hearing none, all in favor? Any votes motion carries? With that, I guess, real quickly, introduce myself, I'm Sue Smith, Chairman of the Planning Board. To my far right, Kevin Corson. Don Shaheen. Our Board Secretary, yeah, Mary Beth. Second one with us. Dan Bargabas and Roy Smith. Carl.
Aaron Crew.
Aaron Crew is not here yet, I haven't heard of him, he's going to be coming. Our Attorney, Jamie Sutton, our Town Engineer, Steve Snell, and our Code Enforcement Officer, Tim Gamy. Thanks to Veronica for the technological guru over there. And Renee Rotundo, our supervisor is. I'm not in the back.
She's ordering a ladder on Amazon right now.
Okay, first, on our agenda this evening. Up feature Graham on schedule tonight is a public hearing for 4006 Orange Gulf Road. Tax parcel number 007 dash 02 dash 29 dot 1. For a two lot subdivision. These have been paid, the requirement of notification of the certified mail has taken place. Feature. I guess for those here before we enter in the public hearing, if you want to. Any other changes? You guys could.
Now, what I had a question, you mentioned the property you're spinning off.
The larger piece.
The larger piece, you were gonna do something to preserve it?
Hopefully, I haven't done anything, made any steps yet, but I don't want to.
Like a forever wild sort of thing?
Yes, I don't want to, I have no intentions of developing it.
Okay.
So.
And I just, the only reason I ask is I remember you mentioning that, and I didn't know if that's something we should enter into the record, so. That's.
It was referred to.
It was referred to. See, I just would like it that way.
What would that mean?
Thirty years from now, when someone wants to develop it, it would be in the record that your wishes were to maintain it as forever wild or whatever. That's the only reason I ask.
Okay, well, I think if I, if I, if that happens, that the, I mean, I wouldn't be in control of that. I would turn it over to a trust and have that they would.
Correct. Yep. So that, that abandoned house to the north, that's not on your property?
No.
No, that's a different, different piece of property.
Any other changes that you had on the map or you wanted to talk about, or basically for those here. In total, it's about a 51 acre parcel on Orange Gulf Road, and Miss Graham is looking to sub. The one being just under seven acres, and that would. Have the house and existing frame buildings on that six plus acres, and then the remaining. Forty-four plus or minus acres. Is what we're talking about, that possibly the. For now, it would be as is, whether she deemed to go ahead with the conservation easement on it or not, but her intent at this point is not to develop. Remaining almost 45 acres.
And the road frontage on that piece was increased.
It's 252.
So it's good.
Yep. In the well, and the stuff that goes, you leave it out. Then Roy, do you have any comments? That is why we need to get up to date on our, what we have to technology, but. If somebody wanted to take a look at the map or not. Otherwise. For the information that we have on this, before we open our public hearing, we need to do a seeker determination. Which is a series of 11 questions and answers to this are based on the information that we've gathered on this. Proposed two lots subdivision. The answers, there's one of two answers. One is either no or small impact may occur, or the second answer may be moderate to large impact. I will read the questions, and if we have any further discussion, always will determine based on the information that we have on this. Number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? No, or small impact. Any discussion? Two, will a proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity in use of the land? No, or small impact. Number three, will a proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
No, or small impact. Number four, will a proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
No, or small impact. Five, will it propose to action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic? Or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway?
No.
Number six, will a proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy? And it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewed renewable energy opportunities? No. Seven, will a proposed action impact existing? A, public or private water supplies, or B, public and private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
No, and no. Will a proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
No. Nine, will a proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources? Such as wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna?
No.
No. Ten, will a proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
Seven, will a proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
No. Based on these questions, these answers, I move for a negative declaration.
I second the motion.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Motion carries for a negative. So based with that. We didn't get comments back from the Anadita County Planning Board. Did you get a copy of?
Doesn't matter, they didn't say anything bad.
Yeah.
You're good.
Basically, there's a lot of whereas's on it, and at the bottom, it comes back to be resolved that they have. See that there will be no significant adverse intercommunity right or conflict implications. So, we're all set, Amy?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to open public hearing.
All right, John, you vote.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now open, if anybody in. Either here or online. Wish to comment, state your name and address, please.
Robert Fredericks, 30 on 81 Orange Gulf Road. So the property that you're talking about subdividing is just the part that runs along Orange Gulf Road. 640 feet from the rest.
Am I showing the map soon?
So this is gonna stay the same?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's.
Uh, yeah, we're, we're right here, we're right here.
Oh, yeah. Sue, you have to have them address.
So it's just.
So we can take minutes. Yeah. Kevin.
Kevin? Kevin?
This is for the house.
Kevin? Kevin? Kevin, come up here and address also, we can hear. Mr. Fredericks?
There you go.
Yeah. Okay, all right, so your question was.
Yeah, well, I was just concerned about this part of the property. This is, if it's just this part of the property, it really doesn't impact me at all, our property here.
Okay.
So as long as this part here is staying as.
It's odd shaped.
Yeah.
All of that is one parcel, yes.
Okay.
All right. Anybody else have a question?
We raised our hand.
Michael Miller, Zoom. Mike, can you hear us? If so, you need to unmute on your end.
I did unmute, can you hear me?
Can you talk so we can?
Yeah, can you hear, can you hear anything?
Right.
Can you hear me at all? I want to check your sound.
Yeah. Okay, go again.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you, sorry.
No, no problem.
Hi, Francis. It's, so I just, I'm, I'm wondering about, I'm really glad to hear about the intention of something like a forever wild status, but. You know, the, the larger parcel is directly behind my house, so I want to understand more about. You know, how, how we can really assure that that land is, is not going to be developed. It seems to me that that's really germane to the question of the approval of the application, and also the answer to those, I think, secret questions that, that you just answered. So I guess I've been curious about that.
Right. Um. Well, how can I assure you? I, I don't know how to do that, Mike. Except to tell you that I have no intention of developing it.
Right, there's some sort of application process, right, for, for conservation status, or?
Oh, yes, it's a very long process. That has not been begun yet.
Right. So, Mr. Miller, over the years, a lot of applications, when they come in, at, at that time, people indicate. To begin with, a lot of them may right off the bat say, yep, I'm gonna subdivide this, and my intent is I'm gonna build, and we're gonna have five lots, there's gonna be five houses right off the bat. And others have come in over the years and said, I just want to subdivide off what Miss Graham is doing, and. We have to take it at their word at this point, what their intent is at that point, and.
And it is not a requirement for you to make that determination here in front of this board. It's not a requirement in order to get the approval from the board.
For the.
For the subdivision or what your intentions are. Absolutely, it would be nice to, to know those specific intentions, but it wouldn't bar you from getting. The application approved, whether you said you were gonna keep it as forever wild, or you're gonna develop it, that's, that. Jimmy and Mike right there, yes, it's not a requirement.
Absolutely correct, right now that this subdivision meets all of the requirements of the code. No variances are required. If there were variances required, then there might be some restrictions that could be put on it. But right now, this board, I think, is generally finding, they haven't made a final determination that it, it does conform with all parts of the code, so. They're not required to say anything, right now, the only thing that could go on there is one single family homes. If someone, if there was going to be further development, it would have to come back for a, a whole different kind of approval. And there is limited road frontage on the main road, it would require pretty significant development. Right, Mr. Bargabas?
Maintain that 200 feet.
Does that help you, Mr. Miller?
Uh, yeah, I, I think so. I guess I'm. Well, maybe, again, maybe it doesn't speak to the application, but I guess my assumption, which may have been wrong, is that, that both parcels would be sold. But it sounds like maybe potentially. The applicants are, are, are maintaining ownership of them, but, but dividing them.
No, no, I would, I'm selling the, the small parcel, and eventually, the larger parcel will not be in my hands, because it will be held by a, a trust. You know, that's the basic intention right now.
I see.
But it's a, and so that's then out of my hands.
Right, okay, and, and can I ask, somebody commented about, like, it got a little garbled, so talking about that. Obviously, it's surrounded by other lots, right, so building a road into there would, I mean, would that be, is that something? That I, I would be reasonable in imagining could happen with the filling out of the next application by the next party, or would that be a? Because it seems like that goes to the question of, is there a significant impact on the, on, you know, on the area, on the character of the area? So I guess I want to know what's likely on the road.
So, Mr. Miller, we have to take this application at its face value here and now. And applicant has just said she wanted a two lot subdivision. And currently, this meets all of our codes for that. What happens in the future, if. It went into like a conservation easement. It's not gonna be developed. If it doesn't, and they wanted to put and develop a road in, it's gonna be back up here in front of this board again. It's not just gonna happen.
Except if there's a single home, right?
Correct, but he was more worried, I think, about.
But a single home would put a driveway, and there is enough road frontage to put a driveway.
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's very helpful, thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No. Just for that.
Close public hearing.
Motion by John to close the.
Second motion.
Kevin, second. All in favor of closing public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and post, motion carries, public hearing is now closed. Any further comments?
No.
Are you guys?
No, ready for a motion?
Waiting for a motion.
I'll make a motion, I just need the map so I can read off the map. Is there a date on this one?
Yeah.
Revision date, is there a revision date on this?
No revision date.
But there haven't been revisions made.
Yes.
The last one was on September 8th.
Yeah, I didn't see a revision date either.
Usually the surveyor.
And you see the changes made.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yep. Yeah, so we can ask them to add that to the milers.
Right.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve the two lot subdivision of 4006 Orange Gulf Road. A tax map, map number 007 point dash 02 dash 29 point 1. Based on a map dated 7/17/21 with revisions. Without a date for those revisions, and the caveat would be that the maps that are submitted have the revision dates added to the maps. That's my motion.
I'll second.
John, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition, hearing none, motion carries.
Steve can work with you to get the date put on there.
Yeah, okay.
What is this? The next step would be?
The maps with the milers, all the copies you need, and the, the time, the clock is ticking. Okay, so you need to get them, get them back up here, so either myself or Tim can sign them, and then you have to get them filed with the county in here, and et cetera, et cetera.
What is the timeframe? Sixty days. Oh, sixty days, okay.
I just want them to include a revision date on the plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
I bring, I'm sorry, where do I bring the maps? There's a whole checklist available, when you bring it up here, right, for signature, and then there's a checklist of what you need to do online. At Anadita County Clerk's site.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, and just subdivision checklist, and it'll tell you exactly what to do.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, to change. Last item was on our agenda, and touch on that real brief.
Please, certainly, yeah, you can come out of order.
Looking for the agenda?
Yes. Just look. Yeah. Okay. For those here, for our agenda. With the apology to pivot energy, Gordon, I'm going to move Comer Farm up a little bit, just to talk real quick on. Where we're at with this, because. We got a map, we have no paperwork, no fees paid, no, nothing, nothing, so I want to touch real quickly. Your next steps, and we can't do anything this month, but I just really want to quickly get through to you what needs to be done.
Okay.
Right, so, and I think we've been in conversation with Tim.
Yeah, and I, and we submitted the miler maps and.
Okay, usually, this is the last step of milers.
Oh, okay.
Because we may, we may be changes made on the maps, okay?
I already know there's changes necessary with them, so usually, it's a paper copy and also a high quality PDF that we can send, like to our engineer that he can look over. My understanding is that you filled out some paperwork, but it was the wrong.
Yeah, and I was given this form, in fact, I was told that I probably wouldn't be here until next month, but I got a voicemail saying I'm on the agenda.
Some confusion and.
Yeah, so, so I was given this to fill out, saying that was the form I was missing, but it seems like it's the same questions as the one I submitted.
Want to look that over, Jamie? We're on the same wavelength, basically, you wanted to do it two lots. So, we can't do a lot with the milers, we need paper copies and PDF copy, we're going with. Control, they should, should know.
Okay.
What we need. Milers are the last step. Like the last applicant, and now she's gonna get these.
Ah, okay.
As far as the cost, yeah.
It looks like the gist of this is correct, I don't know what the, you know, where the maps are. They might learn them. So same surveyor, actually, who just did the last one. And, and send a PDF, if you can let him know.
Okay.
To the town clerk here in Pompey, he has all of her information.
Okay.
And this application, you know, we'll go over it, but it. I noticed that the add data statement was not. Not filled out, so this, this does need to be filled out. Okay. And if, okay, you can call Nikki, I'll help you with that.
Okay.
Let's keep that there. So. We have a requirement of a bunch of copies, or just, if you just make the copies, or?
On the app, yes, she'll make those copies.
Okay.
And she can, or Mary Beth. To scan them, so we get.
So can you talk to her about filling out that add data statement and the fees?
Okay.
Oh, you paid already, okay, all right, so we'll get this to her, the process.
Yep.
And have Gary Katus on the PDF, please.
Okay.
All right. Okay.
Do I have to take all this?
No.
Or you keep it? Oh, okay.
We're keeping that.
I'm gonna give it to you, we'll be in very fast.
Touch.
Okay.
Apologies for the confusion, but we'll get that.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all right, so. Next one. Okay, now, pivot energy. What's this like?
Sweet Road.
All right. Concept site review on Sweet Road, parcel number 012 dash 01 dash 03 dot 1. This is for a tier three solar farm. For those. Here of interest and so on, this is. Based on current local law that was adopted in. A July meeting, I believe. So. This is the first. Application that kind of Pompey has had, so we're kind of learning our way through it. We'll talk. Sent information for this application. Our board has been going over the local law and then researching different. Parameters to try to become more familiar with this, to make sure that what applications come in. Meet the spirit and intent, and in a nutshell, the first part of this, it comes before the planning board for a concept review. And if we. After we've gone through the process and reviewed it, if we feel that it is, meets the spirit and intent of the law, and is worthy of a consideration, we write the letter of recommendation, it goes to the town board. and is worthy of a consideration, we write the letter of recommendation, it goes to the town board. The town board then has to go through and decide if they issue a solar overlay zone over that area. If that's approved, then the whole thing comes back to the planning board for actual site plan review. So in the whole context of things, the planning board could see it twice. But there's a series of steps through the way that cross the Ts, that the Is, does it, is it complete? Does it meet the spirit, does it meet the letter of the law? So you want to add anything?
No, you said it perfectly well.
Okay, so with that, I guess, Gordon.
Thanks, do you want me to get into the camera or do I?
That'd be great. I can move it a little. You can face that way or whatever way.
So yeah, my name is Gordon Woodcock, I'm representing Pivot Energy and Pompey Community Solar. As your person Smith said, we're submitted in July, concept site plan and supporting figures for a four point two five megawatt community solar project. Covering approximately twenty two acres of the ninety six acre parcel that's currently zoned agricultural. As designed, the system will produce enough energy for approximately nine hundred homes, average homes in New York each year. And it's located on Sweeten Up Street Road, just a little bit north, in fact, where Empire Farnes is held this year. A brief summary of the project, happy to answer any questions you may have.
A couple of questions. What's the just out of curiosity, why are the arrays oriented east west instead of south?
It's a very good question and I should have mentioned it's on what's called a single axis tracker. So as the industries evolved, this become in the last few years, in fact, cost effective and advantageous to mount panels on a single axis tracker. So they're essentially flat, but they track the sun from east to west each day to increase the, the energy production. You can imagine, well, as panels are pointed directly at the sun, they produce more energy. The more time you're able to keep them pointed directly at the sun, the more energy you'll get. And you'll, you'll see more and more systems coming out like that on single axis trackers.
Then the other question I had was so are there large inverters or micro inverters?
What we're using, we're proposing for this project is a string inverter, a three phase string inverter. So we, a little bit bigger than a desktop computer, but they're very efficient and then low footprint, you could say, because you can mount them directly on the racking without having to do a large concrete slab like you would for a larger single inverter. So in this case, each inverter is rated to put out one hundred and twenty five kilowatts, which is pretty amazing because like the solar inverter at my house was comparably sized and at this point maybe eight years old or something and rated to put out about ten kilowatts. So they've become really advanced at this point, you can put out a lot of power and we'd have forty inverters in this case scattered throughout your array field.
So that single pole tracking system with the field this large, I've seen them one, two or three at someone's home. How does that work? They're all, how many on a single pole?
So it's, it's a series of poles and they're typically either mounted into the ground using a dribble driven pile system or augered screws, we're not doing concrete foundations there, but it's a series of poles. And then the, the torque tube or main mounting system is attached to those vertical piles. And then the panels are mounted to that.
Right, but this is a moving?
It is, but if you can imagine these, you know, piles.
I, I have a
Yeah.
solar array system in my yard that's piles, but it's stationary.
Right. Yeah, so if you can imagine those piles running north, south
Right.
and a long metal bar spanning them, and then the panel sitting on top of them and that, that bar or tube that's sitting on top of the piles is what rotates.
How long of a span rotates?
Uh, well, it depends on the design, but they're typically grouped into sections of about ninety six modules and then those are linked. And it's, you know, it's very incremental movement because you're adjusting the, the array orientation, say every ten minutes to just make these micro adjustments as the sun moves throughout the sky or across the sky.
And then the, in the northwest corner there, it looks like it's building right in the middle of the.
Yeah, there's a DC, we think a DC wetlands there and, you know, in all likelihood, prefer to avoid that. So of course DC has some provisions in place to enable development in a wetland if you absolutely have to. But the first priority is avoidance. Given that this is conceptual, we, before getting too creative, we wanted to show the consolidated footprint of the array and get the town's feedback as far as other layout considerations before getting, getting too precise. But yes, in all likelihood, we would find cause to avoid that wetland and stay out of the adjacent areas.
Okay.
Okay, out of the ninety six full areas, acres total areas, how much is currently active farmland? Not just what you propose using, but out of ninety six, how much is actual farmland being used right now?
I don't have the exact number, I'm gonna guess about forty acres.
Thirty five.
And how much is the larger field that would pretty much be his? Twenty, twenty two.
Have you talked about or designed any, I know there's a lot of like using it for both solar panels and agriculture like sheep or bees with wildflowers, is there any discussion on adding that to it?
Definitely, all of our arrays are planted with the native pollinator friendly habitat. Also accommodates grazing, we work with, in fact, a New York based grazing consultant called AgriVillatic Solutions. So they provide input to ray layout, make sure that we're not designing it in a way that would be incompatible with grazing. And as a company, we're moving closer and closer to just specifying grazing on all of our operations. But right now, when we're, so we're talking about vegetation management is, you know, those pollinators grow up and things are growing up in the array field, how do you keep it clear? And can either use mechanical means like mowing or now in New York especially, it's becoming very common to graze. And so we do prefer sheep grazing when you send it out for bids for operations and maintenance. Somebody comes in with a much lower bid for a mechanical maintenance, of course, you have to consider that compared to, compared to sheep grazing. But as a company, we really support and endorse sheep grazing because it just makes a lot of sense.
I have mine in a horse paddock and the horses graze and keep the grass down.
Yeah.
I have a twenty one baby for my house and for shade and
Yeah.
So it works, works fairly well.
Yeah, and you know, there's other complementary uses right now is like, like bees.
Pollination.
Leveraging that pollinator friendly habitat to, to support.
Hummingbirds, bats, there's other pollinators.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know, it's like we get kind of locked in on honeybees.
Yeah, yeah. Good, so what's the life expectancy?
So the panels are, are warranted for power, have a twenty five year power output warranty. Estimates vary, but certainly people put it lifetime of a well made solar panel, thirty to thirty five years. The power output contract with utility will be for twenty five years.
And, and different.
That would be, that would be the minimum operating.
How are you managing the mitigation, the reclamation after thirty five years or whatever?
It's another very good question and, you know, New York has, as a state, has really almost, not, I want to say universally, but really pioneered or significantly pushed ahead the adoption of, of decommissioning plans and decommissioning securities. And I believe the town law has a provision that mandates decommissioning security. So not just the plans and is it generally what we're gonna do, but a security to ensure that the monies are there.
What kind of securities do you generally use?
Post. Typically a decommissioning bond.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, and how do we, other towns that I work in require monetary security? Like actual cash.
Yeah.
Which the solar companies have been fine with providing.
Okay, what is our requirement for bond?
We don't, I don't believe we have a specific requirement, it would be whatever we think is appropriate.
Okay, we just have a general term that.
Right, the problem with the bonds is they're, like, you have to renew them every year and so you have to track of them.
Right.
They, we found that did not be a great methodology.
Hard to call to.
Very hard to.
Very difficult, yeah.
Right, so, so we've been.
But letters of credit would be easy, but again.
Not so much, again.
And we got to pay cash.
Yeah.
Yes. And it goes into a non-interest bearing account?
I know, yes. And sits in the town until long past whenever we all will be here.
But how do you determine how much you need?
There's a, you can explain that, there is a, there is a formula that the state of New York has set up. And you know, I haven't seen one for less than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, just for starters. You know, it's kind of based on today's value.
So these panels, when they're, when you're done and you're taking back the property, what happens to the panel itself? Do you go to a landfill, does it?
Yeah, it really depends and, yeah, the panel recycling is an industry that's just starting to ramp up in parallel with the, the solar industry. So as you're seeing more and more systems deployed, people are starting to ask that very question, what are we gonna do at end of life? And certainly recycling is one option, but also repurposing. So some industries of, or companies have popped up to support reusing those panels. Maybe sure, at the end of twenty five years, you know, scenario could be, well, we're gonna repower, we wanna repower with more efficient modules. For example, we're gonna have these solar panels that are still producing power, but we want to use more efficient modules if the town was for it and if the land was for it, just conceptually, right? But those panels still have useful light and could certainly be allocated to any number of places, other countries, other, other operations, whatever. So there's a, actually a big market ramping up now for repurposing modules.
Would there anything, would there be any opposition to a landfill taking it or?
No, not.
Yes, there would be, there are certain components that would not be, would not fit the requirements for most landfills.
I, my understanding is that you can landfill the panels, it depends on the panel type, there's certainly some, yeah, there's certainly some what's called thin film panels that are cadmium tellurium, which are heavy metals, pretty toxic.
Right.
If not handled properly, most of the companies making those panels in fact have active recycling programs because not only are those materials potentially toxic or more toxic realistically, but they're also rare. So their supply chain depends on having ready access to materials they recycle them. The panels that we're proposing are primarily composed of crystalline silicon, which is, you know, one of those abundant elements in the earth's crust and also relatively inner and harmless. So you know, there's glass and aluminum, so other components. But my understanding is that, you know, sure, you want to be careful, but you, if you had to, you could take it to a landfill. That would be our preference.
Right, right, if the landfill was permitted to accept that type of waste and whatnot. And then, of course, the foundations are recyclable as scrap.
Right.
And the manufacturer on your panels?
Well, it's, that, that remains to be seen, you gotta look at the market when we're ready to build and see who's out there, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
And approximately, what kind of wattage?
Right now, we're looking at anywhere between four hundred and sixty watts to five hundred and twenty watts per module.
Wow.
Yeah.
So let's circle the wagons and come back to, you know, there's a lot of technicality going on here. But in the whole concept of things, the part of what we're charged with is, is this a, a fit? Let's start with the actual site and keeping in mind what the master plan within the town of Pompey is, which it does encourage renewable energy. It also encourages view sheds, it also encourages agriculture. Within our law, it also refers to ag and markets. And I guess I'm gonna toss these out here of this particular location is in, with our master plan, it is within the Dalian native view shed. It's the soils with the exception of the wetlands. And I need to go back, but I've written them. Predominantly, it's Lima Silk Lawn, which is prime farmland in New York State and it's also Honey Island Silk Lawn. And these are like two to eight and three to eight percent slopes. Again, both prime farmland and you refer into the ag and markets that part of their sighting goals for solar arrays, that active rotational farmland is most important and especially comprised of farm, prime farmland soils. So I just offered these things to think about locations.
Yeah, there's two issues you bring up, one is view shed. So what was the maximum height, ten feet? Okay, so that could be somewhat mitigated with fencing or trees or whatever. Where does the, like the sheep grazing and all of that, where does that fit into the ag and market on this? Does that meet that?
I mean, how much sheep grazing is going on?
They actually bring the sheep in, cut it down and they move the sheep out.
Yeah, and it's, it's becoming a pretty vibrant.
Yeah.
If they're growing soybeans, there goes your tofu.
Exactly. But I know the federal.
Which they are saying tofu is going up the.
I spoke with someone that works for the federal government and the sheep thing has become a big deal where they, they move them around to various sites.
Yeah.
Because they eat everything.
There is, yeah, there is a business
Yeah.
for it.
Yeah.
But it's a change in the, the dynamics of it.
Right, but it's, I think it still meets the, the the idea of ag and markets and agriculture, you know? I mean, we can't grow any of those crops you grow without the bees pollinating and we can't have the pollinating without having pollination and, you know, sheep need to eat so we can make sweaters.
Yeah, or, yeah. And, and I would put forth, I understand it is sign up the land for a lengthy period. But as we discussed, it's also, you know, using pollinator friendly habitat, potentially sheep grazing, both of which can serve to enrich the land. So at the end of product life, when you've decommissioned it, it's as good or better than it was now. So considerably different than tying it up or paving it, something like that, where it's no longer much more difficult to reclaim as farmland.
But the reclamation, we're talking thirty five years down the road, at least.
If soybean prices do go through the roof, probably be good cause to start farming it again.
Soybeans already are up. Anyway, you get any thoughts, Roy?
Right. Right, and this is how many acres on the ninety six acres? This is twenty two.
Twenty two.
I'm ringing up, well, twenty two out of thirty five actively tillable, the rest is all.
Right, but if I.
Thirty five is not actually tillable. The county put a drainage ditch in the northern field and wet, it's, it's now soaked and wet. So I can't farm on the north side because they did a drainage ditch and they're draining all of Sweet Road into my northern field.
So if I bought the property myself, the ninety six acres, could I build houses on twenty one acres by coming in front of this board and getting an approval?
Well, yes, it would, it would be quite a process, but.
But I could do that.
Said to the last.
Right, I, I could, I could
We'd have.
build on twenty one acres, if I had ninety six acres, I could continue farming ninety six and build houses on twenty one acres. That, that would be allowable.
Depending on the layout, sure, and the, and the road and.
Nice houses, I'd make nice houses.
Okay.
I'm just trying to give myself a perspective that, those houses would probably be there longer than thirty five years. Yeah. Ones I would build, yeah, they'd be, they'd be.
They sold in the winter.
I know that Paris and the solar is thousands of houses.
No, I'm just saying that that, you know, the land couldn't be used for other things. It's not like because it's agriculture, we prevent anything happening on that land. I'm just throwing that out.
Right, but it is an issue for, I mean, it's just as a criterion of the solar.
I understand, I understand, I understand. And I've, I've never seen an attractive solar array yet.
Well, what, so this brings up an interesting point.
I like mine, I look at it, every time I look at my array out in the backyard, I look at my bill at the same time and it's very attractive.
First, it was. We have solar up on our dairy barn, so, but it's up and we still have our land.
Sure, I did like your green roof before the solar was up there, but I, I'm okay with that. Hard to see it though. It's actually a more green roof now with solar.
When, when we're talking about view shed, just for this board, this is the first time we're discussing this, right? So, um, who's view shed are we talking about?
Correct.
That's very important. It is on Sweet Road, it's like literally right there, so every traveling part of the public will see it.
On their way to Paladino's Farm. On their way to Paladino's Farm Store. It's near there, right?
Correct.
Like north or south of it or?
North.
Just south of.
Just north of Sevier, right?
Uh, south.
Yeah.
North of, just north of, uh, Press Falls Road.
Okay, alright.
And, and there is existing vegetation along Sweet Road, of course, it's just natural growth, and we would look at supplementing that with vegetative screening.
We wouldn't see it from the road.
But additionally buffer any, if one packs from drivers.
How far hills in Pompey though is?
A part back is the array.
Yeah, right next to it, it's.
Some of the hills in Pompey, we can see the windmills in Fenner.
Oh, I know.
Yeah.
What's the virus?
You can't see my panels from the road though, because they're behind my house.
So you may not see it from Sweet Road, but you may see it.
Oh, oh, from other hills, absolutely, absolutely.
That's.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I have a question too on, I mean, your math didn't show like you intended on putting any, uh, screening vegetation along Sweet Road?
I, I thought there's some vegetation, uh, buffer areas that are indicated.
There's some there, but, uh.
Oh, that is the best actual site plan.
And that'll get, that, that'll get in the actual site plan where.
Well, yes, but.
It impacts you.
But, but, yeah, while we're, while we're making the recommendation, I think the question is, can it be put there? Is there, what kind of vegetation? Is it screenable? Do you want it screened? It maybe you think it's perfectly fine. So again, kind of going through this exercise that, that, that this person has done before um, is really looking ahead to the site plan.
Yeah.
Um, is it, if it's screenable and we think it can be screened, then it's okay. Or we don't like, want it screened because everybody thinks the solar arrays are beautiful. Again, there are people who think that, that they are.
Right.
It's just a great progress and, and so forth, so.
What is the distance off Sweet Road?
A couple hundred feet.
It looks like a hundred feet off the property line, off the road, right?
And, and, and what, it, it, at Sweet Road, and I don't have my compass with me, but Sweet Road with that hundred and fifty feet or whatever, putting a sufficient height, what, what would the impact be on that solar? I mean, would you have to minimize how high the vegetation is?
Well, we would pull it back far enough from the array that there wasn't a lot of adverse impact from shading, yeah.
Yeah.
And of course, but right, the, the growth doesn't have to be that hot, high to screen the array, because like we talked about, it's not a.
Ten feet.
That's not, yeah, it's a kind of foot tall wind tower or something like that, it's a.
Yeah, and maybe the, the site's fine, but you're eventually saying site plan, it needs to be way back further from the road, right?
Right.
You can have more screening of vegetation. So that's, that's a question. Also, there is, there's a resident nearby. I, I don't know who that is. Um, the question is, you know, I think we should certainly hear from that neighbor sooner rather than later. When you talk about view shed.
Does that neighbor aware of?
Yes.
You're talking about, uh, Baum to the south?
It's a.
She, she's got, she, I can't even see her house from when I'm working that field. She can't see that either. There's probably a hundred and fifty feet of, of, uh, view shed just on our, our common property to the south. The person that we're talking about, Sean Stacey.
Okay, I'm right in the middle.
Correct. That's his, I sold him that house.
For the record, can you state your name, so?
William Osikowski.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Well, Salkowski. And I cleared that land. It was all, it was not productive farmland. And I cleared that land probably five, six years ago with a bulldozer. Not in, not even thinking about the solar, uh, as I operate a beef farm on the other side of Route ninety one. So I needed that for hay. And so I cleared that up, cleaned it all up, and that was when Colonel Marsh was the supervisor. And I cleared all that up, and I cleared the other field up, and then I reclaimed it to make it agriculture. And if you think I'm making a lot of money bailing hay, and, you know, the, yeah, I'm looking at, um, cost benefit. There's no, 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 um, no comparison.
Would you continue paying the other?
Yes.
Ninety six acres or whatever the.
Ninety six, uh, the usable land is just that thirty acres. The rest is all wooded.
Okay, okay.
And I've logged it.
Yep.
You know, which is a form of agriculture, but I logged it. And it's on a, um, ten year program to re-log it when, when, when the trees are a certain size. I didn't butcher it, and I'm trying to maintain, you know, logging as a crop as well. So I'm not taking anything less than two feet in diameter. So anything above that, we're cutting it and opening it up. And I've logged it, and I'm probably fifteen years looking at it again, and I'm now considering before this goes on, if it ever happens, log it again before this comes, because access is always with that solar and, uh, fencing and all the other stuff.
Right.
Makes it very difficult to access.
And add sheep to the beef and put them under the solar panel?
I'd rather raise beef, but the sheep, uh, I don't, I don't do sheep, but I like.
I guess the beef could graze on her.
Yeah, yeah, calves could, but, uh, that's a whole, that's a different.
Yeah.
A point of conversation.
Yeah.
Okay, but back to the view. So this one that's closest to Sweet Road, was it, how much ejection is there to moving that array, say, into the wooded section, clearing out the wooded section and relocating?
We would need to study that woodland area and understand if it is wetlands, then that's.
Probably the northern.
That's, that's.
He's running, he's probably not wetlands.
Yeah. But, you know, that's where you have to get the biologist out and say, okay, we're, let's look at this property. Let's see if there is vegetation, what?
It's on the table.
Sure, I mean, right, if the, if that's something that the, the town feels strongly about or recommends, of course.
But when you're calling view sheds, you know, for me, I mean, Sweet Road certainly going to be one of the most significant view sheds in the town.
And it's, it's one of those things too, where this, this specific location, uh, driven it and seen it, and there is existing vegetation, as I said, along the road. And I, I think we can screen it in a way that's, uh, limiting sightlines to the array, at least from Sweet Road. Of course, wider views shed, like you've mentioned, some of the hills farther away.
Well, the.
Yeah.
Specifically, what hills are we seeing this from?
The only way you can see this from the W I X T Tower. They've put their camera, they'll be able to see it. Nobody else can see it.
Right. So there's not a specific location where you're looking at.
There is nothing higher than that.
Pompey.
Not even, not even Paladino's Carly Farm. You can't see it because there's, it's, there's all woods around it.
Yeah, yeah.
Nobody from the east, from the west. It's a, it's a vacant, vacant, uh, it's agriculture and they're growing crops there. So you could put a screening there, and I don't think anybody noted, knows there.
You're talking about the screen on Sweet Road.
Screen, a screen on, on Sweet Road.
Right.
Nobody else is going to see it.
Right. So it's not like there's a parking spot up on a hill somewhere that's right down.
No, 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 lower lane you could go. But if there is, I'll let you know. Even I'm from Sevier, you can't see it.
Yeah, okay. So I think that needs to be in consideration when we're talking view shed. Where is the view? You know, where is, you know, where can you see it?
Mm-hmm.
Right, not just, not just saying specifically view shed. And what's the thing they do with, uh, the cell towers? They fly up below.
I was gonna say.
Drive around town and. Only the balloon would be ten feet off the ground.
Well, right, yeah. A, and so something that can be done here is initially a view shed analysis, doing just what you're talking about, based on topography.
Right.
Existing vegetation, height of the array. It's pretty a relatively easy and skilled hands right now to do a GIS analysis and, and model where it's going to be visible. The other thing that can complement that is photorealistic simulations.
Right.
So, and you can see kind of what does it look like now? You can model in vegetation growth and, and say, what does it look like in five years?
So do you have some arrays in town now that you're?
In town?
Mm-hmm.
No, this would be the first array that I'm aware of.
In central.
No, central, you're in such, all of such New York.
Yeah, we have, uh, an array, the town of Verona going in and few others in town of Tacon Rogan, Essex County. So I bet I can give you some examples. I know what you're saying. There's certainly some arrays that if they're not done well, they're not as attractive as others. Uh, chain link fence, for example, can be kind of unpleasant to look at, but what we'll use is a deer fence, so agricultural style fence with wooden posts and, uh, wire mesh. It's not as, I guess, obtrusive as maybe a chain link fence.
But, you know, I, you know, at some point getting some idea what you consider to be a well-done well-screened solar ray field, so.
When you chose this site, did you take into consideration any of those things? Because you knew you'd have to come in front of this board. Did you take into consideration view shed and screening and all that? Cause I'm sure you've had those questions on the boards.
Yeah, you know, there aren't, you know, there aren't, of course, a ton of sites that are even, would even lend themselves to the solar array, right? So immediately you're, you're calling the possibility.
And have three phase and.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think we, it's been discussed in the town of Pompey, it's fairly limited. There may be, because of three-phase infrastructure and substation capacity, there's maybe enough space for four projects comparable size. Uh, just the grid can only handle so much. So, you know, you're immediately kind of constrained by where the three-phase lines are, but then certainly you look at, you know, those environmental factors, is it in a densely populated area where there's, you know, houses all around it? That's something that, you know, is going to be potentially challenging if, unless, like we've said, some people support solar and be like, yeah, great, the solar array is going next. But you don't, you can't anticipate that. So you say, hey, there's a bunch of houses. You look at wetlands, you look at topography. Um, you know, what is the landowner then? What's their recommendation? What are the historical uses of the site? Are there cultural factors to consider, historical sites nearby that could be impacted by it? So there's a number of factors that you collectively evaluate and try to find a good site.
Before you come here.
Yeah, of course. Uh, and, you know, in this case, we weren't sure what the town's regulations were, what the requirements were, because they weren't.
Set up at the time.
Find you.
Yeah.
So who contacted who first?
I think, I don't, I would, uh.
I don't think that really matters.
You know, we're just hanging out one day and said, hey, look at how the solar.
I, I, I actually don't.
I, 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 I don't know. It's been always something I wanted to do anyway. Because, you know, you're looking in the news, you're looking at oil, price of fuel oil, and you're looking at, you know, I've always wanted to have a hydro plant. And I have an engineering background, so I'm want to try hydro plants. Well, I couldn't build one in Press Falls, Press Falls, because I live off of that. Um, and then I was, well, geez, how about solar or windmill? Uh, I wasn't too crazy about the windmills. And then the solar, just, you know, I was talking to a friend of mine that we consult on other projects together. This is, hey, how about trying a solar? And he introduced me to Gordon. And I went, hey, let's, let's see what we can do there. And then the more we started, all of us started researching it. It looked like it was something that is viable. And I, and I looked at it as, well, if we do that, what is, you know, all the effort, all the work I put into that field, it didn't happen overnight. And then I'm, you know, in fact, I bailed hay in the northern field today. And of course, I cursed the county for putting a drainage in there because there's a slot of water going through that. So that just, that just breaks. And so what do I do with that? And then, um.
It makes you feel better?
Pardon?
If it makes you feel better, I think every single farmer has water in every field they've never had before.
I agree with you there, but when you, they put in ten, twelve inch culvert from the western side of Sweet Road to drain that whole roadway into my field, you get a little, it's wet, yes, you're absolutely right. But not, I, I mean, I got stuck in there Sunday. If you see a tractor sitting in a mud hole, that was me.
Yeah.
You know, one of the other things that, that we're faced here on the board is we, it doesn't seem that long ago, we went through the windmill. Right. Issue. Now, you know, that's, we've moved on to solar and then, you know, everyone will have a hydrogen generator at their house, uh, probably in twenty years, so.
Right.
It's, technology moves pretty quick and it's hard for us to keep up with it. It took us quite a while to get the, the windmill uh, regulations passed and went through that whole theory. Now we're dealing with, with, uh, with this issue and and how long will this be the favorable way for energy to come?
So what's the capacity for you? You know, say that this works, Sweet Road, this one is successful for you guys and everything as well. What would, and the landowner across the street says, you know, I want one too.
Well, that would, I believe the violation of the law as it's written, I, I suppose you could do a variance, but there's a buffer or an exclusion area where there's one project, and then I, I forget what the radius, you can't have other projects.
And that's in New York State?
That's in.
No, it's in our, our, it's like a mile. I think it's in the old way law.
Well, it is a mile.
Yeah, there's some, some attention paid to cumulative impacts and I, I, I think that's
That's a good provision, of course.
You, what we're doing here is we're building a project and putting in all the capital to install this, this technology that generates electricity from the sun, right? I mean, it's, you know, think what you will about the visibility of it, but it's, it's pretty amazing that we can take sunlight and convert it into electricity. And once it's built, there's, you know, very marginal operating costs. It's really not a lot going on. Once it's built, it's going to sit there and produce energy for the next realistically thirty, thirty-five years. Once it's built, there's, it's good energy. It's as clean, uh, both environmentally and from an electrical engineering perspective as anything out there. I mean, this is a very technologically.
Harder than using it maybe ten, fifteen years ago.
Yeah.
That they overshot what they could produce, these arrays.
Not, I'm not sure.
They estimating how many? I don't know what the right terminology would be, lots of, um, that it could produce. They underestimated, you know, host from, when there's where they didn't take into the, you know, certain things into account, so that the arrays that some people invested their own money in, these were private array.
Yeah.
And, and the production fell way short of what was forecasted.
I, I don't know, mine, mine is.
Well, yours is.
What it's designed, what it's designed for.
Mine's ten years.
You're talking about age?
Mine's ten years old and, uh, it, it overproduces what they estimate.
Yeah, okay. And winter, winter actually is better because of the cold, as long as there's not snow on it and not, not as many clouds. But, but I, I think we could, we could energize every home in the United States with a solar array the size of like Rhode Island.
Yeah, it really wouldn't take that much, um, square miles to do. And then, you know, it really is a mix. It's a mix of sun, it's a mix of wind, it's a mix of hydro.
Right.
Uh, there's a lot of complementary technologies. And as we talked about, you know, and re-envisioning a new grid, solar is an important part of it. And you, you, like, you, like we were saying, this thing's going to sit there and produce energy. And even if there is cold fusion comes out and we can generate all of our energy for a very low cost.
Going to be used.
This is, this is paid for, this is operating, it's built, it's, it's doing good things and.
There are some environmental impacts though.
There, there are. There's absolutely, you know, with anything, when you talk about generating energy, the scale that we consume it.
Right, right.
There, it's just about minimizing those.
But even the manufacturing of some of the stuff, most of the mining of some of the chemicals, I think the Uighurs in China are mining some of the
Yeah.
That are going, going into those panels. And so it, it's not perfect, but.
No, it isn't. And, I mean, it really is like that whole conflict I'm saying, um, and as a company and as an industry, in fact, there's a lot of awareness there. And a shift to move away from that United States, I think, is in, if I just saying, we're not going to get, you know, we're not going to allow panels from those conflict regions or the
Right.
regions, regions that have those, those ethical
Right.
production issues, yeah.
So, Dan, in answer to your question, I think, um, what you're talking about would be probably more dependent on the actual company that installed that private array, uh, that they overestimated for whatever reason, what it was going to produce, but, uh, a lot of those companies aren't in business anymore, you know?
Well, that's part of it too. And this is a private individual that spent a lot of money. So that's a good question. It didn't, it didn't meet the.
I mean, mine's going to pay.
But this is.
Mine's a nine to ten year payback.
Okay.
My rooftop.
Right, but that's a good question. How do we know this particular company putting in this array is going to be here five years from now?
Well, if they're not, we've got a, we've got a bond or cash security to take it down. Or, I mean, I, or they would probably sell it to somebody else.
It's, it's, it's a revenue generating asset that somebody will.
Does that happen in the industry where you sell your fields to?
Yes.
Yeah, just like your mortgage and your house.
Yeah. Right. And maybe you'd want capital to fund something else, somewhere else, right? It just doesn't happen.
Yeah, they're developing, uh, electric cars right now. And one of the things that we, we've been looking at is that some of the cars that are coming out have an estimated after a full charge, five hundred and twenty miles on a charge. Well, that's doable, because that's basically what our, our fuel vehicles are running. So once you have that, they're going to tap it. Right now, the way I understand it, Gordon, is that there's going to be such a demand on our, on our grid system. You're not going to be able to produce. We're not gonna be able to produce enough electricity.
Right, because everybody's gonna plug their car in at night.
Exactly, yeah, and that's where we are, and we're selling our electricity all downstate. And we're, and right now, we're trying to produce it here to keep it here.
So where does this electricity go, just in the grid?
Well, it, so we're tying in this case, and there's not like the house at your, the system at your house, for example, when it, when it's producing more energy than you're using, it's a residential installation, but it's going out into the distribution lines and then sometimes you're powering your neighbors or your neighbor's neighbor. It's similar here, but we don't have any site loads, so we're producing energy, sending it out to the distribution grid. And, and as I mentioned, it'll produce enough energy for approximately nine hundred homes, average towns in New York. So it, it really does, you just go out into the grid and find, it's, find the closest point where is it needed? And so a system like this is gonna feed primarily the businesses and, and homes in and around.
Cause national grid right now is just the delivery.
Right.
Yeah, they're just delivering stuff, yeah, anybody can give them the stuff and they deliver it.
Yeah, and it's right, it's those, you know, turbines in Western New York or up in the North Country are spinning up, they're flooding the grid with energy and, you know, the hydro plants and nuclear and all these full solar plan, panels are coming online, but a system like this is not going out on the transmission network. So it is primarily using energy locally. Under New York guidelines, we set up, basically they allow what's called remote crediting, so we can sign up area homes and businesses to buy electricity from the system at a discounted rate and that's, you know, it's kind of a neat thing too.
Right, so you really, once you stick it in the grid, you have no idea where it's coming. Well, they're.
Specifically, we're not, yeah, we don't know where each electron is going, that's.
Right, right. National grid is doing that.
But you're, you're gonna have subscribers though.
That's right, that's right.
Right, whether or not they get that particular electricity, that electron or whatever.
But they'll get it going, right, it's like ten percent?
Yeah, they get it right, a bill credit, bill credit, same bill credit, I know it's ten percent less than retail and so that just gets, you know, you, let's say you get a hundred dollars worth of electricity, you pay ninety dollars for it and it just gets credited to your bill.
Is that a radius around this, uh, farm that those, the folks that apply for this?
It's, it's really anyone, anyone in national grid territory, but.
Yeah, yeah, you'd be anywhere in the, in the system and buy into it.
Is this fed off of our southwood substation?
It's, I think.
Is it Pompey?
No, I think this, uh.
The do good?
No, I think it's, I gotta look, is it?
Hopefully not do good.
Southwood, I think it's Southwood, is that?
I think it would be South.
Yeah.
Down at Jamesville.
Yep.
Yeah, do.
Or asking.
All the time, any.
So you're asking some, some tricky questions here.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, so the big thing is that, that whole idea of, uh, you know, uh, view shed and really is there an impact with the view shed is, you know, getting specific?
That'll probably be the biggest question, I think.
Yeah. I mean, I can see poppy pines and all those houses, that drives me nuts, but you know.
You can see it from your house?
If I get high enough. And so, uh, water tower, that's, that's a way I can find home, you can see that from.
Yeah, I found that to be very helpful.
Yeah, manly.
That's beautiful, Dan.
Yes, yes.
My water comes from that tower.
Yes. So, um, yeah. We tried to mount the, uh, the, uh, cell tower on the water, uh, tower. So maybe we can mount your solar panels on the water tower. It'd be, need a bigger water tower, probably.
Uh, and I don't wanna be the one up there installing them.
Exactly, exactly, so. Uh, so I, for me, the big issues are just the, the screening on Sweet Road and, um, do you do that study of the view shed?
Yes, yeah, it's pretty, pretty standard practice.
Yeah, okay.
Was there something magical about coming up with a four and a quarter megawatts?
That is what national grids said the line could handle.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're, we are paying for some upgrades to the utility infrastructure to accommodate that, that four point two five megawatts. But more than that would have triggered significant cost upgrades. So I think it was originally proposed at, at five megawatts.
That's what I was wondering. That's my big problem with the view shed. Go to England, you don't see any telephone poles, you don't see any wires.
Yeah, they bury them, yeah.
Yeah, that's what we need to do here.
That's what makes Casanova so unique, it's the, where others there are wise enough to make sure all the wires when they came in to be, or came to be, on underground.
Yeah, yeah. And for a lot of reasons, like when the wind blows up here, our power goes out.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. When you, when you drive along Route twenty, like from here to my house, if you look at the wire, I call them the Chinese han- handcuffs. But those things where they put the wires back together, there's gotta be fifty between here and my house.
Yeah.
And each one of those represents a power outage.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, from the wind.
Quick connects.
Yeah, the quick connects, that's what they're called, and, and that's because of the wind, yeah.
So based on that four and a quarter megawatts, um, and having, and you contributing something to upgrade the infrastructure, is it safe to say that, uh, there's not much more that could be put on Southwood substation at this point in time?
Yeah, I would have to look at the hosting capacity map, but it's certainly limited, like, like, like.
So it's the substation, that's the wire.
It's, it's both, so one, it has to be a, a three phase line and there's only a few segments in town that, that are three phase and then the voltage of the three phase line dictates how much capacity generally they can take. So they run anywhere, distribution lines run anywhere from like four point eight kilovolts, maybe up to thirty four, five kilovolts. Most of them thirteen point two kilovolts and lower and so the, that voltage is higher can handle more capacity, but I, I think you're typically limited to about ten megawatts on a feeder segment and then you're right, the substation is the last sort of checkpoint in there and they can be accommodating feeds from adjacent towns and it's that cumulative capacity that and the transformer banks and how all the components there are rated that dictate how much that substation can handle without triggering like a rebuild or just.
Yeah, I mean, they're all designed for power to go in one direction.
Yeah.
You gotta go the other way.
Yes.
Gotta be pretty tricky.
And that also answers the question about building one across the street.
Right, right, yeah.
What's the distance from?
Or expanding on this site.
Right, or expanding on the site, yeah.
The tallest antenna.
What's that?
Cause they're just south of the antennas.
Right.
So you're the thousand foot one, but I'm just wondering how far distance from the base of that one? The tallest tower up there.
That's north of the array?
So.
No, there's, a ray would be south of.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know exactly.
And what I gotta read.
Put in backward data.
Just making sure it's beyond a thousand feet of fall for some stupid.
If the tower fell and hit his solar panels and you're all.
Yeah, we're beyond the fall zone, right?
Yeah, I, I don't have to check.
How about Sevier Road?
Oh, heck yeah.
Hopefully it won't fall.
No, no, it's, we're waiting, it'll never, it'll, it'll have to hit and roll over a couple of times to get to the, get to that area.
Let's get pretty windy up there.
Or do some type of like.
Yeah, we have to vault springboard.
Tabor dodge.
Yeah, right.
And then on the infrastructure, part of it too is, um, how far away from the substation you are?
Sure, right, because as you get farther away, the, you're gonna trigger other upgrades on components that are intended to protect the grid and allow for bidirectional flow, like you mentioned, and, you know, this voltage can drop, so there's, you see all kinds of issues the farther you get away, so right, the closer it's better. As I understand, I'm not a utility engineer, but that's kind of basic understanding.
Town board will handle the economics of all this. All the taxes and.
Yeah, that's not us. So when it comes back to us, we'll talk about your screening and all that, I guess, right? So we'll talk about the screening and all that when it comes back to us.
I think the biggest thing is the view shed simulations, um, you know, obviously right next to it on Sweet Road, but okay, go across and, and look back and see what possibly could be seen.
Yeah, and that's, that's where there's one of those things where we can go out and drive the site, we can also, as I said, provide the, the view shed study, so you can perhaps pick out some points where you'd like to see simulations.
Yeah, cause I think most people think of you should, they just say it. They don't, yeah, yeah, like specifically who's gonna see it?
Well, or there's a view from the road or something they're trying to preserve.
Right, right.
Like Sanders put a five or a thousand, you know, five hundred foot view shed along three seventy parts of the town.
Yeah.
That, nothing could be built, so. But, and that's where they grow a lot of strawberries too, but I got still growing strawberries.
They don't get real tall.
An idea.
Sand or soil.
There you go.
Always wanna grow strawberries.
It'll deal with the pollinators and, yeah.
It would work, it would, they would coexist.
I don't think it can be you pick though.
It'll work.
Have to figure that.
Might have to work.
That'd be too much shading.
Yeah, really, there's some.
Yeah.
Anyway.
I'm good. Wait, the same thing you do the board now, well.
Well, I'm kinda curious for turning.
But be given an opportunity to start or not.
Is it, is, but it's not a public hearing, right, but we can listen to the public, right? We listen to the landlord, so why not listen to everybody?
Stanley Norman, Sevier Road, seventy-one fifty-four Sevier. I don't know really if I say something that's wrong, maybe she can back me up on this or, um, this solar overlay law pretty well spells out what needs to be done. And I don't know, I mean, I was part of it, the town board wrote it and there were a lot of concerns that were brought to the town board. And I think a lot of your concerns are addressed in this solar overlay law. So maybe before you go any further, take a look at what the law says, and I don't know what stage we are in terms of tier three. But when you talk about a concept site plan, I mean, it gives you specific things that you need to be.
Right, and we'll do that when, we're doing some of that tonight, but that'll come back from the board, it'll come back to us.
Just.
I'll do the more detailed site plan when it comes back.
I mean, cause there's a lot of stuff in terms of concerns and then your view shed, there are specific parameters that have to be met. Um, setback, I mean, using fifty percent of usable land is where that is. So my concerns are some of those as they were when we wrote the law. One of the things, even you, it even talks about the specific in terms of bond, cash bond. And I know, uh, that was a question tonight. I mean, the deposit that it talks about, I mean, it spells it all right here. Um, and what they're looking for in terms of what the law was written, I guess my concern is, is all this being addressed, do you guys have that information? You have the information that you're supposed to be getting? Also on the ECC committee, when does it come to us for?
During the actual site plan.
During the actual site plan for review? I mean, my understanding was when an app, an initial application came in, it was supposed to be notified, but maybe I'm wrong, I don't.
Letter K, referral to Environmental Conservation Commission upon receipt of an overlay district application. So this is the concept site plan, this isn't the actual overlay application. That's when it goes to the town board. If it gets an affirmative recommendation from us from the concept site plan, it goes to the town board as an application for a solar overlay zone. At that point is when you would also, the ECC would get that.
Okay, so I mean, we're just all preliminary stuff right now as well.
Yes, absolutely.
Just, just, okay.
I mean, my understanding is gotta get the okay from the town board or we get before we're formally engaged.
Correct.
One is looking for the right word, basically Jamie, when we're comfortable that we have enough info that we can make
A recommendation.
A recommendation, either yea or nay. To send in a letter format to the town board. If we say yea, then the applicant can fill out the application, pay the fees and so on, and then it's all in the town board's hands of do we approve an overlay zone for solar tier three? If it goes through and they're approved on that, then it comes back with another application to us for the official site plan review.
And, and by the way, the recommendation doesn't have to be, we, we absolutely think this should go there. The re- a recommendation can be, um, more vague, like we, we're concerned about this, we would like to make sure that the board considers this very carefully. Um, we don't have any concerns about X, you know, just all these things that are being discussed. So it, it's, um, a recommendation is a, is whatever this board wants it to look like. As planners, because so the, the town board is like, listen, these people are the planners, they see planning board applications, they see what's happening in the town and planning and this is therefore delegated as a recommendation to this board. And I think it's also the town board wanting more eyes on it. And then they're the ones who ultimately make this legislation and, and will be looking at everything with the fine tooth comb. Then it comes back to this board for more fine tooth comb.
Right, that's when we really get into the detail is when it comes back to us about the specific type of screening and setbacks.
Sure, sure, and I think in this, and you know, it's like, if, if all of a sudden, you know, like it's in a valley and all, there's millions of houses looking down on it or, you know, and it's such a view shed, you might say, there's nothing that could ever screen this, we just don't even think this will ever work. But if, it's, yeah, probably can be screened, it probably needs to be setback for, there are things like that, that would all be in the recommended.
Well, it's like the study he's talking about of view shed hasn't been done yet, so we really can't comment on it except to say to the board, that should be done before.
Maybe.
It comes back to us.
Well, it's part of, it's part of what's required.
Right.
To be done, I guess, is, is, and so there is no formal application is what you're saying.
Right, yeah. No, okay. All those things have to be done to meet it before it even comes back to us.
Right.
Yeah.
You think without a view shed analysis, we're in a position to make a recommendation?
Well, I think you can make the recommendation and just put like we do with anything, is the caveat is we, we need a view shed analysis done. Yeah. I mean, we just talked about it here briefly about, you know, where can you see it and just that's something, you're not gonna know it unless you can do the actual analysis, so you put that in the recommendation like Jamie's saying is.
Well, right, we're sharing with the applicant what our concerns are, the applicant and the landowner are gonna know the property better than we do.
Right.
And so they can hear what we're saying, if you think they can satisfy our concerns, then they could probably feel comfortable.
Doing that study, right, right.
And if they know that there's no way they're gonna screen it, then they're, it's all.
Right.
For, you know, it's just not gonna go in.
Or if you weren't going to make a recommendation to the town, if you're gonna say, we don't think this, the rep, overlay district should be created for this product, then we would also know that there are significant headwinds even having the project considered. And that's, you know, that's really all we're asking is for you.
Yep.
You, town board, to consider the, the project and evaluate its merits.
I think the concept and the idea is a plus. Just alleviate that it, it fits within the master plan of the town on that, and I think the biggest thing coming back on it's view shed. But it's, you know, we've all driven up and down Sweet Road and, you know, you did a fantastic job clearing the, the land, you know.
Got a lot of time.
You know, but it, it, just think of like some cell towers and I, I'll say like the last one down on Indian Hill, you know, we went round and round and round and honestly, when you go down Pompey Center Road.
Can't even see it.
You can't see it, you know, and.
Or you know.
Yeah.
No.
Left off vegetation.
You know, when you get back and really look for it.
In the winter, when the leaves are down, you can find it.
You can find it easier.
But you don't see it driving down.
We need cell phones, we need cell towers, so we have to do the best we can do to, you know, mitigate it.
This too, we need this too.
We need clean energy.
Yeah.
To, to, to charge your cellphone.
Well, and there will be clean energy, it's, you know, town of Clay's doing a wonderful job, so.
Well, we all gotta do our part.
That was a, that was a jab.
So, uh, and that's the problem with doing a master plan is when we were putting the master plan together, we were not thinking about solar farms. We just.
No, but it does, but it does address renewable.
Yeah.
Right.
Renewable energy.
Right, but not specific to a twenty acre, you know, we didn't think about it back then.
I had that in my mind.
It'd be special. What's our next step? We, we have to formulate a letter? We, we have to formulate a letter, sue to send to the town or.
Essentially. What's the best?
Yeah, this is our, our first. Now, I'm doing this, I, I would say that if we can.
And we have the recording, we have.
Do.
You can go back and get a summarization.
We'll wait.
So, all right, so let's try this, let's, let's try this. Again, it's the first time we've done this. Mary Beth's going to put together minutes. This can be a tough one, right?
I know.
And again, as I was saying, just, just do some bullet points. When she gets that, then I think a lot of us have stuff in our head. And then we'll, Sue and I can try to put something seed together, what we think are the bullet points. I will send it attorney client privileged. We never do a reply all, everybody puts in their comments, get a document. We may or may not be ready for a recommendation at the next meeting. It might be a further discussion. I don't want to rush this process. Again, because it's the first time we're doing it.
And I'd like Carl's input also.
Of course. Yeah, and this is a template for, who knows, maybe another.
So what do you think, Sue? Does that sound like a good, it's what I was thinking. There you go.
And discuss it at the next meeting.
Probably discuss, yeah. Then, you know, we'll, we'll try to circulate something. We'll discuss it. May or may not be ready for a resolution at that point, but I'm thinking probably not. But we would.
You haven't bought the panels, have you? Because we're cutting into that thirty five years.
Yeah, no, yeah.
You know, I love the conversation that also is that you've heard, you know, some of the concerns that you can go out. Maybe bring something new to us next month too. Anything to add, Roy?
No, I guess not. This, I'm trying to find this, here it isn't all, all agricultural land is. I mean, it's not all land that's being fired.
Right, a lot of it is.
Seven year road.
Yeah.
The tower.
Okay, so what?
So the panels in here. And then one.
So this.
Veronica, is there a way to? Get into one of our emails to pull up.
This is this.
Okay.
That's the shed.
If you could put the document and. And then you have Google Drive.
Okay.
Where do you put your documents?
Screened off like this.
Because remember we had the icon where I could. All the documents on here.
resend somebody the files.
There is a pretty good offer. I don't want Indian Hill.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think so. But I mean, you know. You'll have a car accident if you don't. Yeah, and again, viewership, who's the part of stuff? Cornet, what's his name? But you're going to do what? That's all by itself. Yeah, it doesn't look like a tree. It looks like a pole.
So if you can get your file in here.
Very much a pro.
But that was going to come down.
Whose actual drive is that? I think it's. I think it's. Yeah.
Yeah. Nikki sent it out.
Go up to, because wasn't there instruction somewhere? But is this the Google Drive instruction? Account. Yeah, you sign into your Gmail account. That being shown to everybody in the world.
Oh, because I don't have.
Let's change the password.
Everybody's.
I will work, it works. We'll work on technology and get it so next month. Yeah, because. Get a color, good color overhead. I think that the way it works is that you have to email from your account to the account that goes with. This account, so it can't, I don't think.
I can't do it.
Account is there, but she would have had to send it to that account, which she can. And then once it's there, you can access.
Can we just turn this over to our engineer?
Not that kind of.
Okay, so hopefully we can get.
Maybe would it help if we could get a good clean PDF from Gordon? That, just showing you.
We can use it on our own computers just to blow it up and.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Get the color and everything.
Yeah.
A good clean PDF of just the. The right, the.
That, I mean, that, so that is, that was sent as a full size color, I believe, in the original document.
It's the one I got was cold.
Yeah, okay.
So I. And it's, I think it is.
No.
Yeah. Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a much better quality.
But I got to, you know. That's all right, I got it, I got it.
Or like you're saying, if you just pull it up on a screen, you can zoom in.
Yeah, that's what I want to do. That's what I would like to do.
So just email us the actual. Because this is just, this must be a scanned copy. So was your. I thought it was a hops. Actually, as far as, as far as losing. The output of farmland. The grazing and whatever works out to. Probably get more value than you do a crap of alfalfa or something.
It's the highest of the best use.
Yeah, the government. Manages to keep prices low enough that that's you could do on all of these crops and break even. Anyway, so I think. But you're a long ways above that.
Break even on like corn crop.
And what is the percentage of agricultural land that I mean farmed right now in my town?
And my property?
This goes back.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Just one lot. Yeah, seventy.
Right.
Seventy percent is not, I'm not being used other than hiking trails and. For the woodlot and continuing west. You know, I got into the. You know, the USDA was helping me with, because I was doing wetlands, because I wanted to build wetlands. So I built wetlands on ninety one. That now feeds two ponds. Farm, I graze rotational grazing on that end. And I take her through cutting the hay there just to keep the animals. That's, and that is again. Only thirty percent.
Yeah, yeah.
I got wetlands on the bottom, you got wetlands next to Jason to nine Route ninety one. And I, you know, I purchased Jerry Rassine's Christmas tree farm, cut the Christmas trees off. And donated them to the scouts and then. Let that, let the cows in there and graze there.
It's telling, how much is actually being.
What we tell versus.
I can't tell the Route ninety one, I cannot tell that.
I'm just.
No.
There's a bunch of comments. Okay, thank you. And Facebook also. Okay. We do have a series of comments and questions from people watching that we'd like to address. So.
What are you asking for anyone specifically?
Yeah, can you read those Veronica for us?
How's it not bad?
Yeah. Mary Baum at thirty four oh five Sweet Road, I disagree with Mr. Osikowski, is that right? I will be able to see the solar farm from three, three out of four seasons when the leaves are off the trees. And the stater's home will be surrounded by it, they will certainly see it and so will we.
Where is that location?
So.
Question for Gordon, what do you estimate the savings to be, to actually be on a customer's utility though?
Yeah, we, we touched on that earlier, the typical bill discount is ten, ten percent.
Do you have, do you have span with text, right?
No, thank you, yes. How do they make sure the land is not contaminated by anything from solar panels? Who pays for cleanup from Helen Bailey?
Well, and, you know, we, we talked about the panels themselves are primarily aluminum glass and silicon. They're medically sealed. Don't want water or anything getting in there. Into the panels themselves, the piles are steel and aluminum. So not dechain or contamination to speak of. And then there's the, the decommissioning security to help with removal and remediation, returning the site to original condition or better.
Does the town have any say in what kind of solar panels get used? Currently, they don't know which ones they're going to put on there.
Well, we, we do, we, we think we have specified with utility anyway. What's called a bifacial module or crystalline silicon. So we are not using a thin film module. That's, I think that's probably what the question is getting at, but. I don't know about the, the town specifying equipment.
The thin film being the technology where you're, you've got heavy metals.
Right, that's like the cadmium tillerium or I think they use, just copper, copper indium, there's another mix.
From Barbara Stacer. We are not aware of the proximity to our home, but based on the surveyor that was in our driveway, we would assume it's very close to our home. We were also advised that our address is what is being used as the site location. How can that be possible when my property is only three acres?
Yeah, if we're using the raw, the address is probably the historical site address. That's close to the project site. I think Phil, you were saying this was originally, you sold that.
Yeah. Piece including that and then I subdivided it and sold that to, to the stasers.
So I can look into that and of course correct the address. It's parcel ID that's, I guess the.
The tax ID would be it. There's no, usually to get a number, you have to have a structure for that number for that lot.
Barbara Stacer also says you can see all the fields from Sweet Road. Helen Bailey, deer fence all the way around, any hunting on the land?
Absolutely.
Just don't shoot it.
Just don't shoot at the solar panels.
Yes, I imagine that happens.
Sure, I mean, sure does.
Is it decommissioned, the whole panel was?
If a panel gets shot, I mean, that panel would be out of. It doesn't knock out the entire raid.
Well, it's like Christmas lights, right?
It is not fortunately like Christmas lights.
I would ask the board in for their first comment, the woman to the south. You're more than welcome to come down and if you can see her house, you let me know. I mean, I'm, I'm serious. I mean, she may think she can see it. Good for her. I can't see her house and I'm, I'm working at you a lot of time with the leaves on or leaves off. You're more than welcome to come down. I'll even have a quad camp, it will go for a ride. You, you, you tell me if you can see, she is the least, in my opinion, is the least visible.
But that'll come out in a, yeah, study we do, you shed study.
Barbara Stacer asks, what is the cadence for regular maintenance of these panels? And when they become obsolete, who cleans them up and when?
So. Regular service visits depends somewhat on company. We spec quarterly service visits and of course there's monitoring. So you can see what's going on every minute of the day. Something came up, the service crew come out and examine it as far as you're decommissioning. As we said, the system life and the contracted energy production is for twenty five years, that amount. And so that's, that's what we anticipate. And, and then the decommissioning plan and associated security covers the removal and remediation.
Does the town have say in new panels if they are updated? Will they keep up the property unlike the tower property?
So as far as equipment specification, not, not that I've seen, that would, that'd be very unusual. It, it's on us to, of course, maintain the property and keep it operating well.
But that's something we could consider conditioning too, is that you stay with these more. Environmental friendly construction, constructed panels.
Yeah, we just asked. I would just ask that if you're putting a condition like in there, that in there, it's, it's allowing you to consider whatever. If in twenty years, there's a panel made out of. Carbon, you know, there's all sorts of materials that are right now are just in their infancy, but in twenty years could be. A very wonderful material and so.
Board or something before you go through it. So you just can't do it, you know, lateral.
Right, you could say something like a panel replacement must be, or I would advocate for you to say panel replacement must be. Equivalent technology, we, I'm not the lawyer here, but you know.
May increase your.
I think it should just look the same.
Yep.
In terms of the technology and how efficient it is and whatnot, that's on you. But just, you know, you don't put pink panels up or something.
Right, right.
You know, if it looks basically the same, I mean, the panels are the same size and.
Yeah.
You know, they're usually dark.
Right.
And I can't see why that should be a, an issue.
What's the, the intent as far as the, the term of the lease? That you're talking about going, getting together on?
What's the intent?
Well, what's the term that you're talking about for the landowner?
Yeah, I believe the base term's twenty six years and then of course there's options to extend if that's hired in the town.
That's based on the life of the panels?
That is, and the contracted. That is, and the contracted energy output.
So that's related to your agreement with National Grid too?
Right, the way that they buy energy from, from the panels.
Okay.
Or from the systems.
Are there any studies on the health impacts of nearby residents? Based on the comments about the toxic chemicals used to manufacture parts of these panels? And what are the impacts for those that have wells?
That was not my, my comment, but.
Who was that from?
I I I made a comment about some manufacturing, but these are not leaching chemicals, these aren't those.
Right, right.
That they could go into a landfill, you know, and that was why, the way I asked it that way. If it was left there.
Well, typically too, I mean, unless the panel was physically ground up into a powder. It's not gonna reach. Chemicals into the water table or into the ground.
Yeah, no.
But it sounds to me as though if it was one of those panels, the heavy metals that you were talking about, that could be a problem.
Only after it's ground up into a pulp and put on the ground, but in addition. I mean, it's heavy metals and many of the things we use every day, the cars we drive, the watches we wear, the cell phones we use, all have heavy metals. And unless you grind them up and let them leach into the ground, they're not having any kind of an impact on on the environment.
Sorry, just in its normal state, it's not.
Correct.
Reach.
Okay, right.
I don't know that.
Something, anything significant.
In fact, to put something in a landfill, you have to do a test of that chemical called a T C L P. Toxic chemical leachate procedure which simulates what happens in a landfill. You have to submit that information to the landfill before the landfill owner dispose of that particular chemical, so.
So you can't envision any solar panel that wouldn't be accepted into a landfill?
Oh yeah, the the uh. The heavy metal ones would be a difficult one to get into a landfill unless you bound up that, you know, chemically altered at some somehow. I mean, we put lead in landfills, but we chemically alter the lead, we add um. A binder to it like trisodium phosphate or something and bind the lead up so it doesn't leach. And then we do that test to determine whether or not it will leach out in a landfill and all of our landfills are secure. Anyway, we collect the leachate and treat it, so we'd know um whether or not it was a problem, so it's, doesn't get into the groundwater anymore.
The panel sitting there in their.
No, no.
To potentially contaminate water and.
It's, it's basically glass and aluminum.
That's right.
Yeah, and the rain just blows off it and they're designed so they don't break with hail and hurricanes and wind and. Like that, yeah, they don't want them to break through the design. To be tough.
Yeah, actually, my panels on my roof, uh when they've had to do service on them, they climb on them, they walk on them.
Problem, yeah, they're they're pretty, pretty solid.
Chris Carrick says, given the topography of the area, the planning board should select locations from multiple. Locations at varying elevations and distances, not just from the road adjacent to the project site.
Yeah, I mean, to answer that question, it is not the role of the board to choose the location, it's to determine when a location is appropriate. When it's been chosen by the applicant, does that make sense?
I I apologize.
Good.
And and the view shed simulation is typically, I think, like a mile to five miles, it's a pretty wide radius where you're. You're looking at where panels or the system might be visible from.
We've talked a lot about this view shed analysis and if this board thinks that it's inappropriate to have that before this board makes our recommendation, then. Then I, you know, I think that's within your purview.
Well, if 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 we send it to the board, telling the board that we believe that needs to be done before it comes back to us. Would that not speed the process?
Well, they have to do it anyway.
Right.
Yeah.
They have to do it anyway.
Right, they have, they have to do it anyway, but but we can't say, no, they can't build it there. We don't have that authority.
No, but you can recommend against it or for it.
And then those studies aren't, of course, cheap, we're bringing in experts that are spending a lot of time and computer power to do these modeling simulations. And so we, you know, then our our hope is that we would at least have confidence that the town is. Going to look at it, is gonna consider it, right, and that's what this, this, I mean, this overlay recommendation is just saying. You can look at it, or we may not even that, like the playing board saying. You can be free to create an overlay district and start the study process, but we're hesitant to just, you know, just put out the. Ten thousand dollars or more for this simulation, let's say, for the board then to come back to be like, you know, we don't want the town to recommend it. Or we're, or the playing board is not going to recommend the overlay district.
Well, Jamie, this is supposed to be conceptual, this.
Right, no, I I just.
Asking for too much information, it gets a little bit beyond conceptual, doesn't it? I mean, conceptual is usually.
I like, I like the idea of Jamie's point and saying that it's conceptual, but it'd be like uh much more, a little more clarity.
Well, I think the view shed is the big issue and. We need, we need to be able to evaluate that in order to be able to make a reasonable recommendation. I mean, if it's, if it can be, if the view shed issues can be dealt with. Then it's a pretty easy call, but if they can't, and. The only way we're gonna know that is by looking at a new shed analysis.
Seems to be the point, it keeps coming up is the view shed.
Sure, and it is part of the permitting process to do that view shed analysis, it's.
Correct, it's not part of the conceptual process.
It's got to be part of, are we even gonna put an overlay here?
Which would be town board. Which is gonna go on our recommendation, which sort of may or may not, I mean, they can do whatever they want.
Again, I think that it's up to this point to decide.
Yeah.
I mean.
Or do you send it off and say, we're concerned about the view shed, we've heard this, then the other thing about the view shed? You know.
Yeah, I mean, I think I could put myself, well, try to put myself in your shoes and say that if I know that's a problem, if I can overcome that, then. The ten thousand dollars, I have more confidence to go forward because I'm sure it's gonna cost you, you know, a lot more than that.
Sure.
To me, it would be like money well spent.
Yeah, it's just, you know, like we've like, I like we've spoken about already, this is a conceptual layout. And if we're doing one visual simulation, we'd like it to be on a layout that we're pretty confident of. Well, at this point it is.
But we may.
The problem with, with, I understand what you're saying, but the problem is. We go or like, yeah, we have some problems with the view and so forth, even when you get, like, when, are you saying when you get to the actual. Application for the overlay, you're gonna have an actual, this is what we're gonna do. Because if you don't, then there's no view shed analysis, it's never gonna work.
Well, no, we were gonna, we would submit the view shed analysis, like, we've already heard some comments from John about wetlands, for example, and. You know, moving stuff into the trees and, you know, there's a lot of things that need to happen before. We can just, we know whether or not we can do that, like to, before we can move stuff into the forested area, for example, we would need to get field biologists out there again to establish. If it's wetlands or where the wetlands are and know where we can adjust the design. And there's been some sentiment that we need to push it farther back from, from Sweet Road, and I think it would be useful to have. A little more understanding of what is likely to be a good layout before committing to visual simulations. Just to know that we actually have a path forward before committing to visual simulations.
So when do you presume that you would do that visual stimulation, after they say this is a good place for this? Overlay, because that does.
Overlay go over the entire parcel or only what's delineated?
Doesn't have to be on the entire parcel.
Whatever acres or whatever.
I guess point of clarity, because if it's over the whole parcel. Be free to take the suggestions and move it per se as you go. But the view shed is, okay, can you see this parcel from? Love, yeah, and, you know, whatever.
That alone might eliminate any idea going into the woods, so.
Yeah, that's true.
Jamie, just to clarify, were you saying? It is a whole parcel or?
I do not believe it is the whole parcel, I I don't think it, it would go over an entire parcel.
That's, and that's not what we propose.
Yeah, yeah.
Just that acre, that thing, the twenty-one acres or whatever.
With with some buffer around it.
I really think it'd be a good idea to do this to be shattered myself.
So we're gonna get.
Let's, let's do this, I mean, we do hit again, sorry, you're the guinea pig, but you are. And, you know, let's do what we said we're going to do, let's revisit it and then. Revisit the concerns and see if we think that what you're, well, what this board might be comfortable making a recommendation upon. But I certainly do not think the board is going to do an overlay, that we should have an access.
So you're saying we 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 go to the board and, or to the board in our discussion and say, we can't make a. Dear board, we cannot make a decision right now without an analysis.
Well, I think it's, it's more involved than that, I I think that might be just one of the factors, like.
Right.
Here's our recommendation, you need to get a view shed analysis, here's where, here's where the concerns are.
Put that on the board.
You can.
Yeah, yeah, I like that.
Or. Or Dan's saying, no, let's get a view shed analysis, so we can make a better recommendation to the board. So, this is a, this is a question.
But I think of you said, you could analysis in front of the board could give them helpful information as far as. Saying where maybe the array might need to be tweaked or where they would. Like to see adjustments maybe.
But isn't that our rule as to where it should be tweaked, not the boards, because we're the, we just decided.
There's a bunch of different, there's two different things going on here, if this is straight up, but again, I'm going to an extreme.
Right.
If, if, and maybe sometimes you don't need it, even in analysis, like, I'm so practical, I know if I'm standing on this hill, this is gonna be safe. You know, there's two hundred houses and everyone's gonna see it and they're gonna hate it and therefore go away, okay? Or then there's, you know, the other end, like, there's probably a chance that nobody's ever gonna see it anytime, anywhere, you don't need a view shed analysis. This seems somewhere in between, which is.
Why do you say it's in between, we've only had one person mention. Analysis.
Well, we, view is the issue, right? People have talked about it throughout the night.
Right, but most people, what I heard throughout the night, other than that one person, was that you can't see it from anywhere.
Okay, so that's, I mean, everybody needs to go up there themselves to figure that out.
Right, is that what we do, is that, is that what we do?
Certainly one thing to do.
Right. But that's how we do it with, we've taken field trips for many of of the things that we've had in front of us. Look at where someone's gonna build a house or, you know.
Well, I'm not gonna rely solely on a new simulation analysis, but I think I I I want one at some point.
I I think we have to have one, but when, when do we have to have that, because now it sounds like we're doing site plan review.
Well, that's.
See, I think, this is where I, I, I'm sorry. View shed analysis does not come during site plan review, it's gotta either come now, it's gotta come before the town board puts the overlay in. Because that is critical to.
To the overlay.
But you can't really do the overlay until we have a chance to tweak this whole thing, because we may wanna put it in the woods and that overlay is gonna have to include that. Piece.
I mean, I have a question back here from the supervisor.
Yes, sorry, um, I'm just looking at our local law. And it looks like the visual assessment does not occur until site plan review.
Right.
That's the way it reads, page twelve. Well. So I'm confused as, and I think I told Pivot that they would be the guinea pigs here for our process. Because it is a three-step process, but I'm just confused as to. If if you decide that you don't want to do that at this level, then you're, I'm getting the discussion, sounds like you're expecting the town. Board to do it at their level, but I'm not sure that's where it's supposed to be done.
But it it's to be done at our level, but the next time we see it.
Step three, yes, so I'm just. It's what it sounds like, what Jamie is saying is that it might be important. For the recommendation. For the recommendation, so I'm confused because that's not how I look a lot. Well, a- and maybe it's um, this, this whole view shed analysis. Is, is a very formal thing, right, but there's the thing about the view, you know, how, how else do we evaluate? Because the thing that the board that we're recommending is, this is a great spot for solar.
Right, but what Renee is saying, Renee is saying, if I'm the applicant and I've read our, our regulations. Then I'm gonna say, no, I don't have to do that, because the regulations state that I do that when it gets to site plan review. Then we get into a legal issue because we've asked them.
If you're doing an overlay and the overlay is only gonna include the panels themselves. You know, I think you're gonna wanna know from us where those panels are gonna go.
Right.
And then you put the overlay on those panels.
Yes.
That's my concern as far as if the overlay truly is just the, the piece of property that the solar farm's on is. Now, he could come before the planning board, if we could want it tweaked, move it back further. Bring the panels out more to the north, so, and if the, if the town board is approving an overlay. They're approving an overlay that could change.
Right.
During the plan, during the planning board review.
I think what to keep in mind and. Because it can be, I, I mean, we have a local law to guide us, but when we were considering it. I mean, we took into consideration a lot of concerns when we tweaked it and tweaked it and tweaked it and tweaked it. Until we felt like we had everybody's concerns on in balance, but I still think what Tim was saying at our town board meetings was. That this, this does not set in stone, if we feel like there is a difference, like. We, we actually start to do this process and there is a different way we want to do it and fix it. We don't, it's, so don't feel like we're, yeah, I I want this to be the right process. Not one that we're just gonna follow the book on, so if it's not working, you can.
Right, because I think we missed that in, in our local laws, that we should have put that as one of the caveats, is that when you come for. This conceptual, you should bring in a, a view shed analysis.
If you fall in the view shed area, you know.
Right, if you fall in the view shed area, we should get an analysis.
I read the overlay district, you're just saying that it's, you're, you're, this process is just saying, you know, the product's worth considering, you're not giving it your blessing, of course. Because there's not any other detailed analysis done, but you're just saying it has the potential to be a good site, so.
Back to us, though, when it comes back to us, we don't have the authority in this board to say, no, you can't, you can't do it. We don't have that authority.
Correct.
Once it comes back to us for site plan review, we can tell you to paint it green or make the trees taller or use deciduous or whatever. But we can't say, no, you can't have your solar farm, we don't have that authority, so that's why when it comes back to us. And really, we're just gonna be tweaking a few things.
Correct, and I think at this point, knowing through the master plan that the location is within. The view shed corridor, I think legitimately, it's a question that needs to be answered, that. Obviously, there's something about that view that it's delineated on that map, so how is that? Solar going to affect that view?
So here's my question to you, Jamie, do we tell the board that's our recommendation, that the applicant put a few shed analysis together? Or do we tell the applicant, he's gotta do it before we recommend it to the board?
This board decides that.
We decide that.
Yeah, the re- the recommendation is. As, as, as detailed or as limited as you care for it to be. It might be, hey, we looked at view shed, we looked at wetlands, we looked at um.
So we have the authority to tell him to go spend the ten thousand dollars or whatever it is to do the view shed analysis and he comes back to us before we even send a letter to the board.
I do believe that you do have that.
Okay.
Yes.
He's got the right to say no.
And it may or.
Absolutely. Yeah.
And and then the recommendation is, unless this guy does a view shed analysis, we recommend no, or again. Unless this guy does a view shed analysis, we recommend no, or again, I, and I, I hopefully, and I, it's the third time I've said this. Right now, we know this is in a view shed area, right?
Yeah.
There's some that we know it's, again, there's solar, it's, cause I've, I've done it in other towns where it's like, it does not belong here. This literally right next to hundreds of people and everybody's come out and it's gonna bother them and they have million dollar houses. Or you've got, absolutely nobody can see this, never will. Then you got something in between.
Yes.
With the idea that this is in a, a view shed that's been identified, is there a higher level of scrutiny at this board at the recommendation level? Is, so either you, you get it or when it goes. To the recommendation, our recommendation is gonna be, don't even think about doing this unless you get a view shed analysis town board. So either way, it's before site plan review.
So. That, that's what we need to do tonight, then, is to, to.
But we, we're gonna process information. We're gonna make, decide probably next meeting whether we do it or not, I think. I mean, there's, we.
But without it, without it, what can we get?
Well, there might be more stuff that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I understand, right.
So I mean, we should just put it all, try to put it all together on one.
Okay.
Uh, can I, and just as a, just so you have another option, I just checked it trying. Computer guides.
So did mine.
I was sitting here without the overlay. Although the law language, but. It allows the town board. To request any additional information. Um, that they feel necessary to render a decision.
Sure, but we're not the town board, it's not there yet.
No, no, I'm not saying that. I'm saying. If you feel like you want to make a recommendation without doing that view shed analysis, but the recommendation would include the town board. You recommend that the town board require that, I mean, that could be part of it. I'm just throwing. You know what I'm saying?
But, but it's, but it doesn't work because if we tell the town board to require it, they require it, they do the overlay, it's gotta come back to us.
If they do the view set shed analysis.
No, that, that's not for them to do.
Of course, it can be, it can be for them to do. We can put it in.
They should delay the overlay until we. Uh, you know, this overlay part is the one that's kind of the.
But.
Flying the ointment.
You're not determining the overlay district right now, you're just authorizing the town to consider it.
Determine.
So that's what, I mean, that's what we're just asking for the opportunity for the town to consider it.
Well, that, that'll happen, most likely, but, you know, I think part of the process to get there is to say, this is where we recommend the panels go. And this is where we recommend the overlay.
You can't have the town, you can't, we can't save the town. We need you to do an analysis of the overlay. That's our role. Our role is to look at what he does, the analysis, give it to us. We look at it. That's what our role is supposed to be, is we do the site plan review.
Again, this is our, no, 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 you're way down the line, not during site.
I, I understand it, but you're asking, you're asking the board, we recommend to the board, they have the applicant. Do a view shed analysis and the board looks at it.
Before they even do the overlay.
Who reviews it?
The town board?
No, that's, it's, we're, we're supposed to be reviewing it. Yeah, because, because that's what our role is, that's what we're supposed to be, the people that look at the site plan. The town board says, okay, we wanna do something here. Planning board, we need you to look at it to make sure it looks right. So by telling the town board to review the, the view shed analysis, we've given our. Uh, rule to the town board and I think that's wrong.
I mean, that's.
So, so then we have to do it now.
That's an opinion, you know, a- a- again.
I like that, that was very nice.
No, I, I'm not saying, I, I, no, it's, it's, it is one, one opinion and, and. I, I think we're back at, again, sorry, you're a guinea pig, but, um. If, if we go back into what Sue, what we said we were gonna do. And I, you know, I know. To go through, but. To see what's really out there and then at the end, we're like, you know what, you tick off all the boxes and this is perfectly fine, but. We need to know about viewer, we're not going, recommending.
So, so we, we can get that recommendation to town, but it's gonna come back to us first. In other words, we're gonna, we're gonna recommend to the town that these things have to be done.
Yep.
And.
And let the town, this board decide whether we get this.
Right, whether.
Before we make our formal.
Right, before we make our formal, the board says, okay.
A formal re- recommendation.
Right to the board, so the first thing is.
There's not, this isn't a two step process.
Yeah, well.
Once it leaves us, it goes to.
To the town board.
So, so it has, so we have to have that analysis before it goes to the board. How else could we make a recommendation?
That is.
The point.
The threshold question.
We're on the same page.
So, I mean, you're gonna need, you're gonna need this visual impact analysis at some point anyway. When you change.
This is.
Plan, tweak the plan.
Yeah.
It's not like you've gotta do it all over again, right? You just, you just look at maybe a couple of, uh. Spots, how that's gonna impact the visual. Um, based on effectively move the panels further north or.
Generally, the, the, I generally slow. Oh, yeah, we're not in the hayfield. Barely level.
Yeah.
Eight percent, three to eight percent. It's when you go further back in, into the woods, it starts to get a little bit steeper. Right, am I correct in that?
I haven't been too far back in the woods, but as far as the site goes, yeah, the, yes, clear.
Yeah.
It starts, it starts to decline, it goes down.
Yep, okay. So you've got the parcel. You. Do the view shed analysis from others looking where the more general slope is and then, okay, oh, what if, if it started to go down? A little bit because we asked it to go further from the road. But predominantly, you're gonna be looking, you would prefer to have it on that more level site anyway.
True, true.
So. I think if you do. Take the driver and do your view shed analysis, it's gonna help you in the long run.
Right, but, but you're talking about if you said analysis, it's gonna be a little bit bigger than just what we're seeing here, so if they've gotta tweak it around a little bit, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I can't see how it would go any further. If I've come around.
That's. What, what would you typically put in a view shed analysis?
Uh, initially, just where is the site visible?
Yeah.
Would you pick a little?
Well, we would not do, in this case, the photorealistic simulations to start with. We, I think if you're setting the, there's just. You're saying the boundaries, you, we'd say this is where it's visible from, or there.
Basically, people are gonna wanna. What their concern is, is, you know, I can look at, I can see a nice hayfield, you know, cornfield, whatever, and, you know, that's poppy. All of a sudden, wait a minute, something. You know, something's different there.
Yeah.
And it's gonna be, well, maybe as tall as some corn and so on, but still from a distance. It's gonna look different. Is there a glint, the reflection, does it catch back? It, that's what they're gonna wanna know, what am I gonna be seeing from? Five miles or two miles or.
I'm sure a view shed analysis has a set of parameters that.
Well, I don't know the answer to that.
You're looking at the structure height, the relative surroundings. Variations in topography and modeling where it would be visible from, so then you could say, oh, okay, it's visible from. Over here on Pratt Falls Road or wherever it is, and you can say, I.
Well, he said that, he said he would hire professionals that do this, that know what is involved in a view shed analysis. You know, that, I mean, so he, you said that earlier, that there are people that know what the parameters are. You say, we wanna put this here, do a view shed analysis, so they drive around and. Find the high spots and so on and so forth.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's typically just computer modeling because. We, we have the.
Right, but they know where the high spots and the low spots are and what, what it looks like from those, right, but, but they're, they must have a.
I mean, the other thing is, and again, too, because this applicant's like, you know, it's gonna be a lot of money. I still think we should. First, do what we said we were gonna do. I know it's an extra meeting, but then he would have a pretty good idea that maybe everything else is fine and. Here's a couple of concerns and, but the main thing's the view.
Okay, but that, I know, would you, we're just doing that internally, we're not sending that to the board, we're just doing that here.
We'll have another, okay.
Another meeting.
This is my take on it, is. Meeting ends tonight. Mary Beth will. Transcribe. The book. We'll send out. But Jamie, myself, Mary Beth, get to.